I'd like to call this meeting for the Buxton Planning Board for Monday, April 28th to order. First item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Need a motion to change the arrangement of the agenda. I would like to move to Section 8, Other Business. Somebody make a motion, please.
Do we have any appointments here?
No. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna move to 8 first, because Central Maine Power is here, correct?
Yes, sir.
I just went after the appointments.
After.
Oh, okay.
After, yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Then we'll move on to appointments. Henry Hess of R A L O B O Ramp Industries LLC has some subdivision amendment for 31 lot subdivision, 3 lot subdivision, Commerce Drive, MAP 9, Lot 27-1-2. Okay. We went on the sidewalk last Tuesday. I think everybody was there except for Craig. Comments from the board on the sidewalk?
Heath, everything looked fine. I thought it looked, everything would be great moving forwards.
Okay. Mr. Worship.
Yeah, I thought it was fine, looked good. We discussed the test pit identification they need to change. The identification for the new test pits that they did for the subdivision.
Roger, you're up, Stephen.
Yeah.
And Greg, you weren't there. We basically, we didn't walk all the way to the back of the road, but there's a large pile of fill that we climbed up on top of and we basically, it's, the property's been logged, so it's really just scrub trees. There's no big timber left. We observed where the new road is gonna come in off the old road. We observed the placement of some of the power poles and it was pretty straightforward. We did notice that the plan needed to be updated, like Scott said, for some of the new test pits that were not on the plan. Other than that, it was fine. Does the board feel we have sufficient information, uh, information to set a public hearing? Do we have answers? Did we have answers? Answers for?
Eight, 10, and 13.
From the applicant?
Yeah.
Do we have those?
Yeah, I don't believe we got them.
We got them during a second submission.
Yes, that was all in the one packet.
In this little booklet? Do you have that?
Yes.
It is in that, in the little one. Didn't have it at first.
Thought we had received it before the first meeting.
Well, mine was mixed in with the Craig project. Oh, my goodness.
I think they still have to dedicate some reserve area because they have poorly drained soils for a second subject.
Okay. I have Section 10 completed.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought they were fairly complete.
I have 13.
Just looking through the packet tonight, I didn't see it. The other day, I didn't see it, it was mixed in with his other applicants, so.
We also, we have A to B.
Yeah, I think they're all set. We just need to have an updated, if they brought an updated plan sheet for the public hearing. Let's see, what's the date? I'll make a motion for a public, to have a public hearing for Henry Hess, R A L A- O B O Rap Industries LLC subdivision amendment, application for a 3 lot subdivision, Commerce Drive, MAP 3, Lot 27-1-2, for 7:00 PM on May 12th.
That's MAP 9. You said MAP 3, MAP 9.
Glad you were listening, thank you.
MAP 9, that was a test.
What was second?
Second.
A motion by Scott, second by Heath, to set up a public hearing for Henry Hess, R A L A O B O Ramp Industries, for subdivision amendment, Commerce Drive, MAP 9, Lot 27-1-2. Discussion, all those in favor? For one, I'm Steve. Okay. Next item on the agenda is an application for conditional use for Todd Libby, Libby's School of Taekwondo, 400 Narragansett Trail, MAP 10, Lot 1 and 2. Is Mr. Libby here tonight? Could you go to the podium and just briefly tell us what you're doing?
My name's Todd Libby. I'm looking to teach Taekwondo in that, in that space. I leased a space from Mr. Gabor over here to increase the size of the school so I could get some more students. I've been teaching Taekwondo for 16 years. I recently had a place in Hollis, but because of family moving back and stuff, I had to close it. And I was looking for someplace that had a little more visibility, a little more room. I was looking for a space that would be more visible too, because it's in a good spot for, you got the crossroads from Hannafords and everything else right there to visibility for advertisement and stuff like that, so looking to get a little more, hopefully get some more students and get the business growing a little bit.
Questions from the board? Roger, you wanna start?
Sure. Is it the upstairs location at the Obashan?
Yes.
Okay.
The ramp entrance.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, and I wouldn't be doing any physical changes to the building. The only thing I would do would be, there's an Obashan sign on the corner by the parking lot. I have a place where I could hang one sign there, and I would hang one sign on the side of the building, same side facing Obashan for advertisement. And they're two by four.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have any other questions other than just that.
Greg?
What will the operating hours be?
Evening to start. Right now, I teach, the kids' classes are 6 to 7, adults 7 to 8 in the evening. Because I, I'm a nurse, I work full-time during the day.
Right.
So, that'll be evening hours to start, possibly weekends if, you know, depends on the students, how many I get.
Okay.
That Monday through Sunday?
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday typically to start.
Are you planning on teaching on, if you're planning on changing, you need to tell us now the maximum number of hours that you would like.
Okay.
Because if you, we limit you to Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and you decide to go Friday, Saturday, you're gonna have to come back in front of us.
Okay. No, the most it would ever be would be Monday through Thursday.
Okay. You sure?
Yes.
Do you wanna add Friday?
Yes, because I'd like that Fridays off in the week.
Okay.
Want to add Friday just in case? You don't ever have to use it.
You don't have to use it.
Have it available, sure.
But it's, but it's an option, so you don't have to come back in front of the board again.
What about Saturday?
Saturday, it'd be a no.
Okay. All right.
And what, what do you think you wanna do for hours? Do you wanna do any hours during, during the day or we're definitely?
Eventually, like I said, I'm, I'm a full-time, you know, I work full-time as a nurse in South Portland, so it's like, this is the perfect location because it's on my way home. That's why I was having the evening classes down the road. If I'm there years down the road, I'm looking at retirement, that's something I could do during retirement, then I'd be able to do day classes.
Well, why don't you ask for those now? Even though, if we grant you approval for those hours, you don't necessarily have to use them.
Never had to do this before, so this is.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. Yes.
Trying to save you from coming back in front of us.
I appreciate that.
This way it helps you, it saves you some money to come back here in time and?
Yep. It'd be the same then, Monday through Thursday during the, during the morning hours.
10 to 7?
Sure.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yep.
You wanna do Monday through Friday, 10 to 7?
Yes.
Now, I just gotta, you said 10 to 7, but on your application, you actually have 6 to 8, so.
So, the evening hours that I'm talking about right now, those, kids' classes are 6 to 7 and adults 7 to 8.
10 to 7, so I just wanna make sure that he's not, 10 to 8, yeah.
10 to 8.
He's just covering the whole day if.
Yep. 10 to 8, Monday through Friday, and nothing on Saturday, correct?
Not if I can help it.
Okay. So, you're occupying the second floor, correct?
Yes, with the ramp entrance.
And then, how many students do you have in an average class?
Right now, I have six.
So, you'll have to provide parking for six?
Typically, parents drop them off.
Okay.
And come back and get them an hour. Some, I rarely have people that sit and wait, but some do. I have, I believe, four, three or four parking spots up on top, and I have, there's a couple down below that are available as well.
Okay, the issue down below is that Obashan stores stuff down there sometimes?
Yeah, I think they've already moved it. I know the manager in, I talked to her about it already.
Okay.
They've already moved some stuff.
So, you're confident that you can work out an agreement with Obashan and yourself?
Yep.
That there, there won't be a parking issue? There was supposed to be a medical marijuana provider there. Is that person still there?
No.
The grow facility underneath.
Underneath.
He was gonna do a dispensary upstairs and he didn't have the funding.
So, he's?
The grow is still there, the dispensary is.
As, as we know as of now. Okay.
Yes, I've actually got some of my stuff, you know, I started preparing it, and I got like mats down and stuff like that. There's nothing left from previous.
Okay. Scott?
That's from the previous who was on the second floor.
Right.
Every time I go, I was just there this weekend and it stinks.
You can smell it, you can smell it from the downstairs.
Still downstairs?
Yeah. There's nothing upstairs.
You think they're gonna be okay?
I've got air fresheners plugged in upstairs everywhere.
There'd be some good air fresheners.
Yeah, they are actually, it works pretty good, I know.
Wow.
Okay. No, I think you guys asked questions that. Heath?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. Town staff? Okay. Are we satisfied with the parking arrangement?
So, for what he's doing, it's one space for each 100 square feet of floor area.
Okay.
Which, how big is that?
The big, the room that, the training area is like 12 by 28.
There's four, four parking spaces on the upper level.
Yep.
On the lower level, if there's an issue with Obashan, that's where I come into play because it doesn't belong to Obashan.
Okay.
And they have a tendency to expand, so every now and then I need to talk.
Okay, because last fall, they had pallets of?
Yeah. They have any of those.
They had?
Oh, I know what they do.
Yeah.
If it isn't an issue because the marijuana grow, oh, they would go.
There's only one, one or two people.
That's right.
Right.
So, before, when the flower shop was there, and the ILOC was there, Obashan was there. Both of those people had needs for parking, and they negotiated it.
Okay.
So, without the need, Obashan will expand to the available space.
Okay. So, you're?
They're not there, but it's a good business neighbor who's let them use it to store their coat, their, their goods there. Once the need's there, it's a phone call from me to the manager or Obashan corporate, and they won't.
Okay. So, you're aware of the situation?
I am aware of the situation.
Okay.
We've let them use the space just to be a good neighbor.
Yep, that's fine. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
So, if that's 12 by 28, he only needs 3.36 parking space.
Yeah, just, just under four.
Well, he has, you have, there's one, there will be one designated handicap spot at the top of the L. And then you could park what, two more cars or three more cars?
I believe three.
Three.
There's four spaces on the top of the L. That's plowed sand in the winter.
And one of those will be handicapped.
Yes, it's the one closest to the ramp.
Yes. Has the status of ramp been improved?
As far as I know.
That has been repaired.
It has?
Another railing was broken. No one was using the upstairs.
Right.
In the process of putting the dispensary up there, he did some repairs to the ramp.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems like it's fine.
Does the board feel we have sufficient information to set a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yes.
Does somebody wanna make a motion?
When do we wanna do it? Before we make a motion?
I think next Monday.
Today is?
A week from today?
What time?
5:30?
30, yeah, 5:30 would work.
May 5th.
5:30 would be great, yeah.
What's the date on Monday?
May 5th.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Yep. I'll make a motion to set a sidewalk for, ta ta ta, 400 Narragansett Trail for the Chalox Taekwondo Studio for 5:30 PM on May 5th.
Second. Motion by Craig, second by Heath.
Sure.
Discussion, all those in favor? Be five in favor.
How does it, 5:30?
5:30, May 5th.
Thank you, sir.
We don't necessarily need to come inside the building, but we'll meet you in the parking lot and then go from there.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Is that agreeable to you on the?
What's that?
Do you have enough time to get out of work to be there by 5:30?
I'm actually on vacation next week, so it works perfect.
Good. Okay. We'll see you on, a week from today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on. Now, I'll take a motion to amend the agenda to go to Section 8.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to skip down to Section 8, Other Business.
Okay.
A second?
Motion by Craig, the second by Roger, to amend the agenda to move to Section 8. Discussion, all those in favor? Be five. Okay. Somebody from CMP here?
Yes, sir.
Could you come up and briefly tell us what you're, what you're asking for?
My name's Troy Thibodeau, I do the community relations. I work for Burns and McDonald and, as a consultant, and CMP's our client, and this is Adam Markey. He's a unit manager for CMP who oversees the work stream of Buxton, your StatCom site. I'll just give a brief overview and update on where the project stands and where, where we're at, and then we can get into kinda where, what we need to finish, finish this thing. So, currently, we have three work streams going on. You have the StatCom, which is the buildings, the big metal buildings off of Henry Hill that you folks approved. From there, we're building a transmission line, a 345 KVW line from those buildings over to the actual substation. Where we are now is currently, the StatCom and the civil work is done, the building's up, meaning, and the foundations are in for the steel structures that will receive the wire, but now we have to build the towers and the poles for the wire to go in between those two sites. And that's kinda what brings us to here, is the drilling, which is, they've hit rock much sooner than anticipated. They took bore samples and tried to determine, okay, we've got to drill a nine-foot diameter hole, and we're supposed to hit rock at 23 feet. Well, we're finding that we're hitting rock at, say, like today as an example, we hit rock at 18 feet. We weren't anticipating it until 23 feet. So, what that adds is time to the drilling, because you hit granite, and it's obviously a slow, noisy process that I assure you, no one enjoys. So, that's what's brought us full circle, to hear you folks approved notification of giving us some extended work hours, and unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to be finished in that set time. And the short story is, as it pertains to drilling, without some extended hours into May, we're pushing, it will push drilling out 80 more hours of regular Monday through Friday work. That's a quick math I was just doing on that, so that'd be another two weeks, obviously, of drilling. We're getting 50-hour weeks, so it'd be a week and a half roughly extra where we could probably done with that drilling and stop kinda making everybody unhappy with us, which I assure you, nobody, nobody wants. On top of that, there's a few dates, there's two Sundays that we need to work, which are, it's not drilling, it's not the loud work, it's actually the, the poles will be up, and we need to attach the wire essentially from the StatCom buildings, and that wire will be strung, and we need to tie it into our substation. Now, our substations are controlled by ISO New England, which CMP is in charge of transmission of power here. ISO New England dictates where they buy that power from and how it gets to our homes. Maine is a, very much a pass-through state, so part of the facility that's in your, your town here sends power to the rest of New England, places like Connecticut, Boston, all these places. So, the bottom line is, we have to have, we have to be able to shut the power off at a certain point, and ISO New England controls that, and it includes Sundays. It starts on a Saturday, a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, because typically, those are low usage days, meaning people aren't running their AC, they're not running their heaters, and they'll only give us those outages certain times of year, typically spring and fall. And that's because summer, everybody's running their AC, and wintertime, people are running heat. So, that's what's dictated those dates, and they gave those dates as the Sundays of June 15th and June 22nd, which the work will be occurring in the substation, which is furthest away from residents and that, believe me, that's what I try to avoid, that's what my job is, is typically dealing with that sort of thing. So, those two Sundays of, again, June 15th and June 22nd, we're looking from a 7 to 3 work hours on that, just to tie that, that wire into the substation. So, that, that's the, that ask, the drilling extended time. And they originally asked for Saturdays from May 3rd to June 28th, 7 to 5. I think currently, we have that right now, and that again, isn't gonna be drill work after, outside the, outside the substation, there is some structures that have to be drilled and some different foundations that have to go on in the substation, which is a separate permit from a little bit of everything else. So, that work stream would include some drilling. Again, that's furthest away from everything. What they're trying to have done by May 6th, May 7th, is all the drilling outside of the actual fence of the substation, so the loudest stuff should be done at that point, and we're trying to just have the location of the substation drilling going on approximately another six to seven days after that, and then we should be done. They're showing today, and I just literally, we just got off the phone with these folks, they're showing the 16th of May. So, we don't, we don't, we're not looking to drill on Sundays, we're not looking to do anything noisy on that. It would be an extended day on those Saturdays, which would be May 3rd and 10th, and then the extended work hours of 7 to 7 up until those dates. And I know that's a, that's pretty much the nutshell of what we're needing to notify on our hours. The good news is, if we can pull all this off, we're supposed to turn this thing on by August, and most of major construction, aside from pulling some mats out and dressing up the site and doing some finishing touches and different things like that, which will go through, probably through the fall, the major like construction should be done, I would say by August, unless something catastrophic, and knock on wood, we have to fix something, but that's, that's kinda where we're at.
What did you say the dates were you wanted to drill again?
The drill, Saturdays of May 3rd and May 10th, 7 to 5, and being done, they're showing done on the 16th, which is, but the, that 12th to the 16th will be down in the substation drilling, and. the sixteenth, which is, but the, that twelfth to the sixteenth will be down in the substation drilling and a lot of that, like, the first ten feet of that's kind of man-made, like, where it was leveled out with large stone and the boring underneath that, it, it's hard to know, drilling seems to be a, uh, for anybody that's in construction, it's kind of a nightmare, is the short answer, so, but that's...
How many drill rigs do you have running now?
Right now, we have two.
Two.
We're looking to bring in a third potentially.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
So that would potentially, because that's the way I would lean, if you brought in a third rig, you could do that much more in that, a lot of time.
That's what we're, yes, that's what they're trying, they are, we're going to have to, because the, the, the more driving factor is this, is not that, we're, we're, we're obviously here trying to be good neighbors and trying to, I've been communicating with Patty, which has been awesome and she's been, she's a huge asset to your town and, uh, certainly very thoughtful in how, uh, she works with, with folks like us. That's where we're at, i- it's not to be deceiving of any simple way, we've just, we've hit some serious stone and it's in the contractor's best interest to get this done, like, I assure you, they're not wanting to prolong this.
Now, if you're running three rigs, that's three times the noise though, correct?
Correct.
So you're running two rigs now?
Yeah.
And we've seen posts on places where it's fairly loud.
Yeah.
On a butter's houses.
Yes, sir, it, it's, it's, it's loud, I mean, it's, that's, that's, there's no other way to put it, it's, it's, it's loud.
So have you looked at alternative designs, doing some drilling and painting and doing concrete pads instead of...
That's a great question, that's a, uh, they had and we're, we're at the point now where that's, what's how it's going to be, because these structures are very large and three forty-five, the actual, um, conductor is very heavy and it's made to withstand certain loads, so you're drilling thirty feet into granite and then you're pouring concrete around a steel cage of bolts, so short answer is, that's, that's the design that's been approved to do this by ISO New England and all these varying bodies of, uh, how this goes, so there's no change in that now, um, that's, that's where we're at. And, and the issue too is where some of that sound is coming from, they've had to run some, they've tried the perf drills, the air hammers and apparently this rock is, is brutal, really, there's no other...
You have to drill a hole thirty feet deep by...
Nine feet diameter.
For the pylons.
What's that?
For the pylons.
Yes.
For the, carry the wires. That's a monopole, right?
Yes, sir. Yep. Yeah, so we'll have steel structures on each foundation.
Yep.
And then bundled conductors, so two wires per run.
And then you put rebar in the hole and fill it with concrete and then put bolts in the top, bolt the pylon too.
Anchor bolts and everything, yep.
Yeah, okay. And then how do you muck out, I'm just curious, how do you muck out the hole as you're drilling?
The, uh, we have environmental on-site every day and, uh, that is handled a couple different ways, depending if you hit a tremendous amount of water, we bring tanks in, that water is removed and then brought, uh, off-site. Uh, sometimes it's approved environmentally to, if you can filter it through, uh, filtration bags and you're allowed to put it back in, but it's, it's all, that's all MDEP and EPA, so that's extremely stringent, like, uh, and there's only a few spots, like, if you were to go down there now, you'd see the, the tailings that come out of the holes, which is some soil mixed with rock and a lot of it's these cores, because they're using a big core drill, uh, be a good lawn ornament if you, if anybody wants them, but...
How do you get the cords out of the hole, the excavator?
That's, that's one of the loudest things, so when they, when you're hearing the banging, is when you pull that core drill out and it's, it's, it's working and, you're working the core out of it, out of the actual bit and that's the, that's the...
Above ground?
Yes, and that's the clanging you hear is, is, uh, when you hear that ting, 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 kind of clockwork.
Right, right.
Snap it, yep, and it snaps and drops out and that's loud, it's not, the drilling is that grinding noise you hear just going on the rock, but yes, the louder parts of this is, uh, compressors at times to run the, uh, the air hammer, we, we try to keep that as much, uh, little as possible and, uh, and they're trying to do it with these, these core, the core bits, so, what you do is, uh, is, is they've tried, they're doing about every technique they can right now.
So you drill a couple cords next to each other and then bust out in between?
Or you, or you swish-cheese it with a perf drill.
Yep.
And then when it gets real bad on the super hard stuff that I think we've gotten through now, we had to use main drilling and blasting to come down and that was particularly loud last week, was a actual two-foot diameter air hammer where it's ting, 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 all day and that's, i- it's brutal, it, you know, there's no, there's no easy answer on that, so.
Okay.
We're trying to, trying to plow through it as fast as we can, luckily we're through some of the harder holes, that being said, I, I don't, I don't know.
You don't know until you start.
Until you, until you start drilling it, because you've got to remember that the bore samples and they do a series of bore and core samples, you're only getting a small snapshot of what's there, so you might have just drilled a two-inch hole thirty feet deep and only hit a rock and then by the time you get there, you're hitting this ledge, so it, I, it's, it's impressive, but yes, it's, there's no easy way around it, it's, it's, it's very loud and like I said, the math, if we, without the extended hours, we will prolong this, this process about eighty to ninety hours more than it, with the extended hours and that's, that's the, the big crux, I guess.
Scott. Or Heath, any more comments?
So, you're, before us, before, a few weeks ago, it was going to be two weeks, now you're asking another two weeks and I...
I absolutely...
Can't say it's going to be two weeks and... The, uh, the, I wasn't, I wasn't in favor of the Saturday extended hours last time, I'm definitely not in favor of continuing Saturday where people have, you know, it's springtime, there's weddings, there's graduation parties, you can't do anything outside, um. Is there a workaround for the loudest part to not happen during the week and you, you know, you need to bring in more equipment, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I've been in construction for a long time and work and when you're behind schedule, you bring in more equipment.
Yeah, I mean...
Only way around, there's only way around it and it's not fair for these neighbors to put up with this.
No.
We had all winter, you guys have been delayed on this project right from the get-go. I don't know what we're getting for complaints here, but I've been certainly seeing it online, there's certainly enough of them.
Understood. I mean...
I like to know what your commitment is for getting more, I know you're trying to get more, but who...
But again, more equipment is...
More noise.
That's alright, but it's...
But if it's a shorter period of time, yeah, then people might not be so, you know, adamant about it.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, don't get me wrong, I fully understand, you know, as, as Troy's saying, it's a loud process. We're doing the best we can to get in and get out, uh, I hear you with the additional rigs and we're, we are working with that right now. The plan would be to finish the foundations outside the substation first.
Yep.
And then by the time we get that third rig, we're inside the station.
Mm-hmm.
So we've got two rigs inside the station and one finishing outside.
Okay.
And then, uh, other than that, we're kind of limited on the space inside the fence line.
Right.
But yeah, this, this assumes that the, the three rigs.
So Patty, you've had complaints?
I have not had a lot of complaints.
A lot?
I have not had one.
Okay.
Um, I had one last week.
Yep.
And I have seen what everybody else has seen on Facebook.
Yeah, they...
Um, they're not coming into the town, it's not being called into the town.
Okay. Is there a, can we open up a line of communication that if she receives complaints from a butter's?
Yeah, we've been, we've been doing that very long.
One is why we're...
Okay, good, so...
So we don't know to call, that's the...
Right.
I mean, everybody on, uh, every circle, we've gone door to door, I know a lot of those folks, uh, we've had a few contentious, um, folks, obviously, uh, but, you know, that's why, I guess that's why I have a job, but yeah, since the beginning of this, for, for a year and a half now, uh, that Patty can give out my cellphone number.
Just want to make sure we're clear.
I guess, in, in my experience with anything, it's customer service and, you know, you guys are doing a, a job that needs to be done, but, um, you know, is there anything you can do to, not appease the, the neighbors, but to, to give them a line of communication, so if, if, not that Patty's not going to be available, but like, I mean, you guys would field some of the complaints and resolve them.
That's what, that's what my job is primarily, uh, I've left door hangers, cards, I mean, it's, uh, there's two numbers, one I gave out my cellphone direct and then the other one is, uh, it goes directly to my email, so if they call, this voicemail, I call them back within five minutes, like, it's, it's a, uh, it's something, for once, like, I, I've lived in Maine my whole life and, and, uh, this project has affected my, uh, my own road, I live in Green and, uh, it directly impacts, uh, the town of Green and, and my own road and my own family, everything, so I, I understand from that aspect of it, so I had a good conversation with Patty about that, you can imagine what that does, uh, as you do this job and live in these communities as well, so, um, but yeah, no, that's a, that's an open line of communication, these, these folks, like, I, that's, that's why I have a job, it's, it's, uh, I, I get it, there's no other way to put it, I completely understand.
How about some free power?
You know, I, I was actually going to say, I mean, i- when I mess up somebody's food ticket, they, I take, I take off, take it off their bill, I mean, if you looked at them and said, hey, listen, we're going to make some noise, we're your neighbors, we're CMP and we are your neighbors, I mean, here's a, here's a voucher for fifty dollars off your power, it, it goes so much for, I mean, I mean, you guys are your own business and, and I mean, it's, that's just, but my experience...
No, it's all, I, I get it.
No, i- it's just, it's just to make sure that the, you know, a happy neighbor makes, i- in, in Patty hasn't fielded a phone call, but I've certainly seen a bunch of comments and Facebook response of, hey, what the hell's going on and, um...
And that's why, that's why we're here, like, to try to come to, to these types of settings, I think, uh, like I said, I, we represent CMP, we're trying to change that into the positive, right, so, like, so people can get a hold of somebody and, uh, I'm part therapist, it's all, it's all, I get it.
No, I get it.
So, yeah, no, that's, that's, that's why we're here, trying to do this, this way.
The two Saturdays, May third, May tenth.
Yeah.
I'm not in favor of...
You're looking for seven to seven or seven to five?
Seven to five.
Seven to five.
Yep. So right now, we're approved eight to noon, I believe? Seven to noon in our permit.
Yep. Seven to noon.
I think it should just stay Monday through Friday, like, the wire hanging, I...
They have Saturdays.
Huh?
They already have Saturdays.
Saturdays, yeah. Till three, right? Till three at this time, right?
Seven to twelve.
Oh, twelve.
Seven to twelve.
Yeah, it's hard to get anything done.
Wire, the wire hanging, I, I get that, I've been on projects where, yeah, that's true, there are just certain times you can shut them down.
The, the problem that we're seeing though is to get to that point, we need to get these foundations in.
Yeah, I get it, but get more equipment, what can I say?
Well, I mean, that, that's part of it, uh, another big piece of it is the concrete cure time.
Yep.
Um, so we have standards that we have to meet on that front, so there's really, you know, the first step is these foundations, after that, we can hopefully make up some time and maybe, you know...
Do you anticipate...
The concrete work, you know, that's, I'm talking about the drilling.
Correct.
Concrete work, that's not noisy, curing's pretty quiet.
No, but it has to cure in time for them to do the, to put the poles up.
Correct.
To get the, the bigger ones, like, go back to the ISO New England outage explanation of the June, those June dates.
Yep.
That, that's what is the critical, because if we miss that, we will be here for another year.
Get more equipment, get more equipment, that's, like, I know, I'd, I'd hate to be listening, I'd hate to be working Monday through Friday, come home and, and you listen to this all day again on...
On Saturday?
Yep.
So I guess my question is, because you originally asked for a two-week extension, right, which is till the twenty-eighth and then now you're only asking for another extension until next Tuesday for the drilling part, and then after that, what, the noise stops?
Yeah, that's, yeah, the drilling, they're actually the, it's going to be the sixteenth because it's a week down in the actual substation, so there'll be some noise, it'll be reduced, but the real loud stuff, yeah, May sixth is what they're showing as far as the schedule of, of where it will get.
But then my next point would be, you've already, you were supposed to be April twenty-eighth, you're asking for another week and then come May sixth, are you going to ask for another week?
I hope not, I won't, I won't be here, sir.
That's what I'm getting at, that's right, because then, and the reason I'm asking is because you're talking about how hard this, this rock is that you're drilling, so is that going to extend that drilling even more than you're already asking for a second time?
Yeah, it would have been nice to had neighbors here, butters here, that was really...
I, I think that, that the butters haven't called Patty directly, so even though they're curious about the noises, they, they haven't made a formal complaint, correct?
Correct, just one.
True.
Just one.
Can I read the hours, the way the conditional use permit was approved?
The original one?
Yep.
Yes.
Construction hours will be Monday through Friday, seven AM to five PM and Saturday, seven AM to twelve PM. If additional time is needed, the applicant will notify the town code enforcement office prior to extending the time.
So it's your discretion?
Nah, it says notify, this is the wording before I came here.
Okay.
But they, doesn't say ask, it says notify, prior to working beyond the hours, that's how we approved it and they're coming to us.
And notifying.
Notifying and I'm kind of making a mask, because I, I think that I don't want that on my shoulders if, if it gets extreme, but which I don't think we should do again.
Yeah, it's a, yeah.
And we've already modified the hours once.
If you guys are unable to get a third rig in there, you think it would take more than two, the, the ask you're asking for right now, with two weeks? I- if you only had the two rigs?
The, the, yeah, I mean, the, the pressure's on regardless, because it, uh, we, we, we need more rigs, period, that, that's, so that makes sense, it's going to be louder.
Yeah.
That's going to happen regardless, um, more equipment, that may get us out of there quicker, may not, as far as coming back and asking for more time or no, I, I mean, like the permit says, I mean, we can notify you as many times and, and I didn't, that's why, to change an image and to be better neighbors and partners is more to go this process than it is just to throw a permit down and say we can do what we want anyway, right, like, that's not what we're about, that's not what we're here to do. So, that's, so I get it, we're going to have to bring in more equipment anyway, simple math, uh, without a, even with the third rig and we don't get those extended hours, we're looking at a minimum of eighty extra hours, even with the third rig with what they're showing and this is coming from the drillers, which I'm not a, I'll be the first to admit, I'm not a driller, so, um, that's eighty extra hours with three drill rigs, they're showing that they can be done by the, the sixteenth with everything with a third drill rig, that's, that's really what we're looking at. And then... And really, at that point, we're inside the fence line, so there wouldn't be a need for Saturdays, if we go beyond the sixteenth.
Do they have the third drill rig all lined up if...
Uh, we're currently working on it, we don't have one on-site, but we're working to get one. Yeah, they're, they're, that's their push, it's, it's the subcontractors, right, they...
I would think at a minimal, it would be nice to have a little pamphlet, explain what you're doing, how much longer you anticipate it to take, is...
Uh, we can, we can do mailing.
That you can, that you can handle error, whatever, to the neighbors, because there's one thing, not hearing the noise, it's like, good lord, how long is this going to continue? But if you have something like, oh, I only got another week and a half of this, okay, you have something, right?
Good, that's a great idea.
Have no one knows, we say, here's what we're going, this is what we need to do, this is why we're going to deal with.
We can even put that on the webpage.
And, and if we had a copy of that, we could put it on our webpage.
So we'd have people know there's an admin side of it.
Yep.
Yeah.
You'd certainly do that.
Right at the end of the tunnel.
That is not a, that's not a problem.
Okay, how's the board want to proceed?
I think that, um, as it was written, the, thank you for notifying us, I don't think you, you know, that's the legal language of it and, you know, I appreciate you guys really trying to be accommodating for, for the town of Buxton.
I kind of read that the other way, but it's fine, I don't think there should be any more Saturdays.
So are, are you physically asking us to vote on modifying the hours or you're just going to do it anyway?
I mean, we're certainly not going to do things without your approval or your, uh, on-board, but, but yes, we would like to move forward.
Those are their hours, but they're going to notify us, well, notifying is, I guess, it could be one, two ways. One, well, we're just telling them what we're going to do, or two, notifying them, hey, we need to change, make a change. Could it have been clearer, yes, that's for sure, that's...
How's the rest of the board feel?
I understand what they're up against.
I do too.
Yeah, I mean...
Oh, I do too.
I'm an earthquake contractor, I, I totally get it.
Without the extended hours, it's just going to prolong this.
I would rather see it, I'd rather see him just put the head down.
Yep.
Rub the Band-Aid off.
Get it done.
Yep.
Because it'll be May by Friday.
Yeah.
So, it's going to be nice.
I think...
I say, put your head down, hammer it out, get it done. If you think you can get it done in that time, I mean...
And, and if you guys, is that a process for just making sure you were taking care of neighbors that were coming forward?
I think that's a great point, on the notification, uh, the, my boss, or the, the, certainly KDA two handles, uh, CR for this... for this part of the project. That's a, that's a non-issue. We can, I'd be out there tomorrow giving people information and meeting with them and that's, I do a lot of that. So, that's no problem. We've been doing it right along. We've talked to Jim Rumpf quite a bit and a few others over there. So, you know, that's, that's, that's an odd issue. And we can certainly put something together to explain what is going on.
Yep.
Roughly our timeframe. We do have a better understanding of that now because ISO New England has given us the dates, right? That is, that was a whole other, we've taken up enough of your folks' time, but that's a whole other side of this that we have no control over. So, it's little things like that that we certainly, we're learning as we go too. Like, I don't think CMP, certainly in my experience, has gone above and beyond trying to do this sort of thing. So, that's why we're here, trying to change, change some of that.
So, you have ISO's deadline to make. You have to be...
Yeah, we have, those structures have to be in, the concrete cured, the steel post in, and we've gotta tie wire into that substation.
Otherwise, you guys are here until, you won't be tying anything until...
If we missed, so right now, our end date is June twenty-sixth to have the station and the line work done.
Yep.
Then we hand that over to the Statcom group for all their testing and bringing it all online. But if we miss that date, we're looking at the fall. Like Troy said earlier, there's shoulder seasons. So, they have spring outages and then the fall outages. And nobody wants us to kick this back to the fall.
Heath, what is your opinion? And if you don't have one, that's fine. I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot. Just curious.
I mean, I really would like to see no Sundays. I mean, but I guess...
We're not gonna drill on Sundays and that's not what we're asking for. The Sundays were those two, those two specific dates, the twenty-eighth...
For the ISO, right?
Fifty, yeah. Those are, those are the ISO.
That's located in the substation?
That's in the substation. That's to tie wire into the taps and switches.
It's all wire.
That's from Henry Hill and in, um...
No, it's all the way back from Emery Circle. It's the substation that's down back.
So, basically, just Emery Circle would be that Sunday? You're not doing anything Sunday on Henry Hill?
No, no. The Statcom should be, no, no, not, we have to tie into the substation when the power's out. So, nothing's energized until we tie into there.
Right.
They give you the dates when they're gonna shut it down.
Correct, yep.
Well, they have to account for someone else to generate the power that you're not...
Yeah, that's why, that's why it's, it's like switching railroad tracks or lines. They're basically finding another source of power and then shut that down.
Hopefully, hopefully, it's not ninety-five degrees and humid on that Sunday, right?
Yeah.
I mean, they're all the way down in the back. They're inside the substation.
Yep. I don't have an issue with that. Okay.
And we're trying to push the drilling to the substation now, get all the outside work done by the sixth, if we can do it. And then, the rest will be finishing up in that substation with two drill rigs.
Okay, but we did experience the sound from the substation.
Yeah, it's just gonna be reduced. We can't, there's no way to muffle it.
Yeah, I know. Okay. You mean a motion or we just all set now? I'm all set.
We can get a motion for it.
I don't think we do either.
Well, it sounds like it's unanimous for Saturday, because I'm not, again, for those Saturdays. They've had two weeks already.
Okay. So, Saturday's amended from noon till five?
Seven to noon.
Seven to noon. And they're asking from seven to five?
Seven to five, Monday through Friday, seven to noon.
Yep.
Saturdays.
I'm inclined to say seven to noon on Saturday.
That's all you were asking for anyway on Saturdays, right?
No.
Seven to five.
Seven to five.
Seven to five. I agree with Scott. And the only two dates on Sunday would be to connect on the fifteenth and the twenty-second.
Ah, yep, you're right. I even wrote it down.
Roger, how do you feel about extending Saturday?
I think that what they're requesting is within reason because of just trying to meet that deadline. And especially since there haven't been any official or formal public complaints about noise.
Okay.
And that, I mean, my feeling is that if there starts to be generating, like, or generating public complaints and, you know, then I think that you guys should address them on an individual basis. Like, you know, like I said, if I mess up someone's food, I give them an appetizer.
We have outlined and mostly she'll have my cellphone number. I haven't taken any complaints on this specific topic.
How long have you been drilling?
Started, uh, end of March.
So, you've been drilling since the beginning, end of March?
Yep.
All right.
So, I think, I think a little pamphlet with your contact information.
Yep.
Just, that would be great.
Yeah, we can do that. That's no problem.
Heath, Sundays, extension or not?
Well, if that's the only days that they can connect, we have no choice.
No, I mean, on Saturday.
Oh, Saturday, oh.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So, I guess if we just do a straw poll, three people are in favor and two people are against. So, I guess that would pass or be approved. Okay. All right. Good luck.
Thank you guys for the time.
Thanks for your time.
Patty, if you have, like, a comment, that's...
You wanna hand out some of those core brown things to the neighborhood?
I have those right in my truck. I'll start doing that tomorrow. I'll do it again. We've done it three times now. So, a lot of the people have our, at least in immediate vicinity. I'll go out to where we had a, the skip road, probably. Haven't been in that one as much, so.
Okay.
Well, I'll see what I can do.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen.
Next on the agenda is the CEO report.
None.
None. Approval minutes for April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I've read through them. I don't have an issue.
Yeah, I'll make a motion except as they were written.
Second?
Motion by Scott, second by Heath, to approve as written. Discussion, all those in favor, before with one abstaining or absent. Approval bills, Mr. Treasurer.
No bills.
No bills.
Not possession.
Okay, communications. Public notice intense to file for Gary's General Contracting to file a natural resources protection DEP twelve-foot driveway from Berry Road over Berry Farm subdivision, lot two, to provide access to lot three. And then, also, for this Gary's General Contracting Incorporated land licensing, consolidated application submission for Berry Farm subdivision, lot two. Did you guys ever get that packet?
Yep.
Information there?
Yep.
So, they're gonna come back, if they get this approved, they're gonna come back for a resubmission?
To cross that, do we, do we think they have to do that?
Sure, because otherwise, the plans submitted to the registry of deeds, this is gonna be, this is gonna be added in for easement or right-of-way. We don't know what he's doing yet.
They can probably incorporate that in what they're doing in this next phase, maybe. Yeah, but I'll have them come back.
I think at least they need to amend the subdivision plan to show the right-of-way going from Berry Road to lot three. I don't think they need to...
Yeah, because at first, wasn't lot two, that was all just gonna be, not a conserve land, but like, was lot two, that, all that area down there gonna be, what's the word for it?
That's just all part of the facility up top. Open space, if you will.
Yeah, open space, I thought, but I'm probably incorrect in saying that.
So, basically, they're amending their plan to remove the entrance off Long Plains Road, Route twenty-two, and switch it over to Berry Road. So, I would think that's a major change to the subdivision plan. So, that would be, need to be reconciled on the subdivision plan.
I guess I don't hold that...
At least an easement from, for the lot two description.
They don't show that, but this is what they wanna do off Berry Road.
Right.
They're gonna basically come right through lot two and over access lot three.
Yeah, because there was a...
They're looking at a stream crossing or something.
They were doing a stream crossing right up here, if I remember right.
Yes.
Yeah, a strata line.
Yep.
Which they said they had approval for, but reading through the application. I don't know if they really did get approval for it, but it was kinda...
So, they'll do...
Yes.
Yep.
But we need to see that right-of-way on this plan.
Right, yep, definitely. Yep, hundred percent.
Okay.
That is a major change.
Other business, CMP was here. Anybody like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, the chair will turn a motion to adjourn.